So next item on the agenda. Is a public hearing for a major modification to the final development plan.
West, case two, two thousand and eighteen, for fifty-two forty Beechmont Avenue. Once again, as I did prior, this is a public hearing and having seen people in the audience come and go, I will, not because I like the sound of my own voice. Oh, thank goodness. Hold your applause. Let's not do that. I'll turn it over to staff for their presentation.
All right, thank you. This is case two, twenty eighteen Anderson, which is a major modification. The applicant is Jessa, Jessica McClory of Stantac on behalf of Mako Express Wash, on behalf of Woodstone Four Holdings, Skytop LLC, who is the property owner. The location is at fifty-two forty Beechmont Avenue. And the request, the applicants requested a modification to the final development plan for a new car wash, including a hundred twenty-foot-long car wash building, approximately thirty-nine hundred square feet, with stacking area, vacuums, parking, and landscaping. A little bit of zoning history on this particular piece on phase one. Again, this was, there was an initial zone change on this property, and then there was a phase one final development plan and a phase two final development plan. So in twenty eighteen, that was when the zoning commission heard the zone change. The Board of Township Trustees approved the rezoning in June of twenty eighteen. This is for multifamily in the rear of the property, as well as three commercial outlots. Two of the existing buildings, and then the third lot, which is the lot in question tonight, at the time was proposed to be a retail strip center. On October twenty-eighth, twenty nineteen, the final development plan for the two commercial existing buildings and the construction of a new one-story, which was approximately ten thousand six hundred forty square feet, a hundred and seventeen parking spaces, lighting, and landscaping was approved as a final development plan. This was considered phase one. Phase two was the apartment building in the back. And also just a little bit more history, originally the property was all under one ownership. Ultimately, the, the owner, the developer of the apartments, Metropolitan Holdings, purchased their parcel, and then the three commercial out parcels were created. They were all one parcel at one point. They came in for a land division to create three commercial out parcels. Those three out parcels are still under the same ownership. And this is the footprint of the new buildings, the new Skytop Apartments, which are still under construction. This was the footprint of the retail shopping center. Cages normally doesn't do this, but for this site, some reason they did. They, when we put in the final development plan and that was approved, they went ahead and entered it into Cages. That generally doesn't happen. So this building, of course, is not there. This is under construction, so this is accurate, and these are the detached garages for the apartments. This is Big Ash Brewery, and then this is a vacant two-tenant building currently, commercial. And again, these are the three commercial outlots I was referring to, and this is the other parcel in the back. This is a recent aerial from twenty twenty-three. Again, the vacant parcel under question tonight. This is Big Ash Brewery and the other commercial outlot there. The entire parcel is EE Planned Retail, which includes the three commercial properties here. Across the street, there is some retail zoning, there's some single-family to the east, H, a little bit of H Riverfront zoning, and then single-family to the north. This was the final development plan that was approved by the zoning commission that does show the little strip center here. It did have a drive-through that was proposed on this side of the building with the drive-through lane. Then again, shared parking with all the three commercial outlots. These are some aerials that we took during our site visit last week. This is a drone shot of the out parcel here that's in question tonight. Skytop Apartments under construction, and then Big Ash Brewery over here with their outside patio. This is looking at the opposite direction toward Elston and Beechmont Avenue here, and this is the creek. This is just an aerial showing the Big Ash patio area, and the, the building is just off of the picture. These are some of the site photos, standing back, looking back at the apartments and looking back at the parking lot. This is looking across the frontage. There is an existing sidewalk there, the guardrail. Big Ash is here. This is the site proposed for the car wash, and then the commercial outlot over there. Currently vacant. This is one of two access points into the shopping center. This is the signalized access point out to Beechmont Avenue and Elston. I'm back to this. So there is an existing sidewalk here. There is a proposed sidewalk on this side with a trailhead location that was approved as part of the final development plan. Recently, the township did construct a sidewalk on Elston here through a grant, and then there is a connection to the Little Miami Trail that's proposed in the coming years that we also receive funding for in the planning stages. This is the sign that was approved by the zoning commission for the development. It was a multi-tenant sign for the apartments and then for the tenants that were proposed at the location. This is one of the access drives that would be across all three properties that would be shared both by the apartments and by the commercial uses. The outdoor patio again. Looking back toward Beechmont at the proposed site in question. So with a major modification, if it is not consistent with the original approval of the final development plan, that is what triggers a review by our zoning commission. And again, the previous approval for the outlot was about a ten thousand six hundred forty-square-foot building, and then the applicants proposing a car wash would drive with vacuums, and only four parking spaces where a hundred and seventeen were approved for the entire commercial area, not just for this particular parcel. So we went through zoning resolution compliance. These are the areas that are not compliant with the zoning resolution that need to be considered when making a decision about the major modification. One with sidewalks along a public street. Their site plan did not identify the connections that were shown in the original final development plan. The two parallel spaces, well, and, I'm sorry, let me go to the proposal. We, we don't normally flip back and forth, but tonight we're, we're doing that, and I apologize for that. Okay, so this is the applicant's mittel. This is the drive-in, the main drive at the signalized intersection with Beechmont and Elston. The applicants proposing stacking access here, or this is the shared access. This would be the entry into the car wash building. And similar to the last car wash, once you go in through the car wash, then you have access to the vacuum cleaners. So this is the circulation pattern that was proposed. You would come into this particular drive-al here. You pay to go into this. Car wash is only proposing two lanes. You would go through the building, and then you could end with the option of going through the vacuums. Thanks. Again, this is a little bit closer up of the drive-al to get into the car wash building. They're proposing a bailout lane in front of the building here. And then if you can tell, this is the existing curb and the existing sidewalk that you saw in the photos. This is the Big Ash parking area here. This is the proposed landscaping plan, trees along the shared access drive that enters in off of Beechmont, and then trees off of the shared access drive with another landscaping area here. And then the planting details. So back to the presentation. Okay, so these are the areas that are compliant or not compliant with the zoning resolution. Sidewalks along public street, which we just covered. The dimensions of the parallel parking spaces, this was near the, where the area to pay. The parallel spaces were identified as eight feet wide when they're required to be nine feet wide. Parking requirements for physically disabled, we did not see the vertical handicap signage. Bicycle parking was not provided as required. We did not have elevation drawings for the dumpster and the trash handling areas. Shared parking was a big part of this review because the original approval was predicated on the three commercial outlots sharing parking. And we calculated all of the commercial outlots based off of our shopping center requirements. We did not calculate each parcel separately because with a retail strip center and with, like the town center, you may have a restaurant in one space, you may have a retail. Well, the parking requirements are different. A restaurant may go out, a retail may go in. So we just do the basic parking calculation for a shopping center. And that was also what was considered when the three commercial outlots were subdivided. They could not meet their minimum parking requirements on their own parcel alone, but they could with shared parking. And so the land division was approved because there was a shared parking agreement in place, and that was shown on the land division that was submitted to us. Same way that was presented to the zoning commission during the approval. So shared parking is a big concern with this. With the proposal, it would eliminate forty-three spaces. And then with the current layout, it also does block access to about twelve spaces for Big Ash. So I think that is a concern. The other concern was cross-access. Cross-access was very important to this because of shared parking for one, but also due to overall transportation or access into the development as a whole. There were two access points on Beechmont Avenue that was reviewed by ODOT, and that was approved with no modifications because of the signalized intersection as well. But cross-access within the development was critical to make sure that there was adequate traffic flow throughout the development. Vehicle stacking spaces, they are required to show seven spaces or nine by twenty. So that just needs to be clarified on the plan. Lighting, there was no lighting plan submitted. The landscaping plan was not consistent with the original plan that was approved with the final development plan. We felt that it was lacking in landscaping and trees as well as shrubs. It also calls for a minimum of ten percent total interior. There was no signage plan submitted for wall signs. No freestanding sign is permitted additional other than what was already existing. We also look at applicable plans with any major modifications. So the Anderson plan. We did feel that, you know, it was consistent with the land use and development goals of development in a vacant spot. Anderson Trails Plan, again, it did not incorporate both a sidewalk on the one side of the drive and then acknowledging the trailhead that was approved. Also, the cross pedestrian connection is very important with this particular site. Design guidelines, the elevation drawings were not submitted, so we could not determine if it was consistent with our township design guidelines. Site planning, we did not feel that it was consistent with that based off of the elimination of shared parking as well as the cross-access connections. Relationship to surrounding properties. Again, focused mainly on access and compatibility with the surrounding uses, and we did not feel that the cross-access and the shared parking is compatible. No lighting plan was submitted to determine compliance with that. So staff's recommendation of this, a car wash is a permitted use in a retail zoning district, but we felt that it was not, is not compatible with the approval or the intent of the final development plan that was approved with this rezoning. We do feel that it could hurt the essential character of the neighborhood, especially with the new apartments behind it and its relation with the microbrewery and the retail outlets. We feel like there would be an impact on the adjacent commercial uses because of the elimination of parking and then the blocking of some of their parking. And then also the proposed use. It does provide a reasonable profit, not necessarily maximum profit. Just one other comment on this. So the, the Big Ash outdoor patio area, that was expanded during COVID. And that also, that site went before this zoning commission for approval of an expanded deck, which has not been constructed. Is not. So I think it is understood by all parties involved that the parking spaces that are currently being occupied by the outdoor patio would have to be used at some point if this strip center was built or another use goes there. So I just wanted to make that clear, that those parking spaces are part of the total parking count, even though they are being occupied by outdoor patios right now or outdoor seating area. Parking was being used by where the apartments are being constructed now, but once construction started, that shifted to this vacant lot. But ultimately, it would work out, but some of the outside seating area would have to be eliminated to make use for those parking spaces because those are included in the overall total count. So with that, do you have any questions? Oh, I'm sorry, yes, Sarah, did remind me, we did receive a whole slew of emails today, and we sent the, we laid them on your chairs, mainly from investors in Big Ash. So we did provide that to the zoning commission. We also provided that to the applicant. We printed the ones that we received up till four-thirty. We have not printed any that we've received after four-thirty. We had to get ready for the meeting.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Ms. Treeeliff, do you have any questions for Paul?
No, the staff report was very helpful to me in this. I did see the notes also placed on our desk.
Yeah, thank you. Ms. McBride.
Just one quick question. Paul, what's your best guess as to how many spaces are in the outdoor patio area? I'm just curious.
Well, there were twelve that were, I'm sorry, twelve that were being blocked in about this particular area. So it's about twelve twenty-four.
The outdoor patio area, I think, has about.
So about forty-eight.
Twelve spaces, maybe?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
I think I was a commissioner on the original with the Big Ash and the expansion and with the apartments. And with the apartments, didn't we not have issues with the width of the spaces, number of spaces?
Yes, so during the, when the apartments were approved, there is a portion of their parking lot where the zoning commission approved a reduction in size of those spaces so they could maximize parking on their parcel to meet the requirements for an apartment.
And we're at the absolute minimum at this point?
For the apartments, yes, and, but the apartments do not have a shared parking agreement with the commercial. The apartments have enough parking for their use on the apartment parcel. Let me go. So, so this parcel here is owned separately. It's a, an LLC that's under Metropolitan Holdings, but it is owned by the apartment developer, and they have enough parking, and they were approved with enough parking for the apartment buildings. These three parcels were approved, the commercial with enough parking just for these three parcels. So there's no shared parking agreement between the two.
Okay, and as far as what was approved for the expansion in Blue Ash, it was, was it some outdoor seating? It also was owning an outdoor kitchen?
It, it wasn't what is being used now. It was a deck expansion.
But it is, I mean, but we did approve it.
You did approve it, yes, correct.
Yeah. Okay, and just, I guess it's more of a frustration of a comment, but this is, two, two months in a row, we've had applicants, applications come before us that seem somewhat incomplete. Don't know if there's a checklist. At some point, we say, come when you're ready versus taking up the time of the commission. So, just a comment.
Thank you.
Some questions of staff, thank you.
Paul, just a question, probably this will become a dead horse, but with the shared parking agreement that was in place for the first final plan, development plan approval, that was part of the approval, right?
I can, it was, yes, it was part of the land division first and foremost. That was a requirement of the land division because the standalone parcels did not have enough parking. So the only way we approved the land division was that that shared parking remain in place. And then it was also a part of the final development plan. The parking analysis was on the final development plan of this phase for the commercial outlot. So that was approved by the zoning commission because it met.
But it has not been amended for this review process.
No, not yet.
Thank you. That's the only question I have right now for you. Thank you, Paul. Seeing no more questions for staff, if the applicant is here and would like to come up for their presentation, please do so. Remember to state your name, address, and affiliation.
Hey, I'm John McLendon from Greenville, South Carolina with Mako Express Car Wash.
Could you provide a street address, sorry?
Sure. Three twenty Falls Street, Greenville, South Carolina, two nine six zero one.
Thank you.
Paul, yeah, I guess we can look at the site plan. So I got the, the list of emails today as well from the neighboring brewery, Big Ash, and I know that there's a good handful of them in attendance tonight. I've spoken to a few of them already. And I think, I guess before we go through and address, I guess, the commissioner's concerns and comments with what we've submitted, I'd like to propose to, to the people of Big Ash Brewery, if maybe we can all get on a Zoom call together sometime next week to just talk through our site plan. I think when we've been designing this, we've really just been looking at our use operationally and how to best situate our parcel for our own operation and really haven't taken into consideration the neighboring use or the patio that's there currently. And so I, you know, in reading through those emails, I know there were some concerns about noise and, and other things, and all of those comments, I think, are things that we can definitely try to address or alleviate in some degree. I think, you know, we can move the vacuum producers all the way to the farthest east point of the site to keep them as far away from their customers. You know, this is like the perfect layout for us, but there's some concessions that can be made with regard to the length of the tunnel. I think we can probably shrink that tunnel to a hundred feet and pull it in further away from, from the Big Ash parcel to kind of alleviate some of those noise concerns as well. As far as the parking goes, our civil engineer, myself, and Paul discussed that on, on Friday. We've got a little bit more homework to do to, to determine the parking that's there, what we're going to be eliminating, and what the residual out parcels will be left with, and if it'll be sufficient. I think, you know, for our use, there's really not a good way for us to share parking just by way of, of having dedicated vacuum spaces for customers to use. You know, it, it, the other two parcels will have to be able to self-park if we're able to, to do our, our development here.
With having said that, are you interested in, in tabling or asking us to continue this application for tonight? Or do you want to proceed?
I, I'd like to proceed to the extent, I don't want to hear a decision today because I don't think it's going to go in our favor based on what we've submitted. Commissioner Lewis, like you said, it's incomplete to some degree.
Personally, I mean, as a commissioner, I would recommend continuance as a minimum just because there is so many unknowns, and the people who are here tonight, welcome to speak. We love to hear from them, but it sounds like it's a moving target.
Right, and, and that's what I, I wanted to make sure before we continue, that at least we could hear from everybody still.
Continue, I mean, continue it to next month.
Correct, correct. So would that close off public comment tonight? Because I think it's important for us, you know, just me here, but.
We can choose to continue it at a later point.
I would just, I would like to hear what the folks at Big Ash have to say, and, and maybe we can do it offline, and that would save everybody some time.
They speak to us, but you don't speak to them during the meeting. What you do after the meeting between you, the dialogue, which we always encourage. Everyone wants to be good neighbors, so. If this really is a negotiation session.
Got it. Yeah, we'd propose to continue if that's all right with you guys.
Yeah, and I, I was just going to reiterate what's already been said. I really think you want to continue.
We'd like to continue, please.
Mr. Chair, if you would.
Yeah, having said that, we can close the, this part of the meeting and entertain a motion if there is one.
Paul, do we need to, do I need to reference to continue the public hearing in progress? So you don't have to, okay. So I would make a motion that we continue the major modification to case two dash twenty eighteen Anderson, fifty-two forty Beechmont Avenue, continuing the public hearing in progress until our July meeting.
I will second.
I would just say, July at a minimum, could be later.
Till the applicant advises that they're ready to move forward.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm going to vote a no on that, just, and I just want to clarify, I totally agree with the board to give them more time and all that stuff, but I have issues beyond the details of the project that I don't, I don't believe that, I, I feel like I might be asking the applicant to waste their time, to put a lot of time and effort into it. So I'm, I would be in favor of just hearing the case tonight. So I'm, would vote no with that reason on the continuance. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, could we have discussion on, on the motion?
Yes, sorry. Looking for the roll.
I agree with Mr. Ellis. I have some, I agree with you. I don't think we should have heard it. I don't think it should have been on the agenda. Having said that, I also don't want you to go and spend a whole bunch of money and so forth. I, I have some real problems with, with the proposed use.
I don't disagree, but however, a car wash is allowed under the zoning, so he can, can come back, so.
That's fine.
Oh, yeah.
However, I'm just.
Was that your response to the roll, to clarify?
I'm sorry?
Were you responding no to the roll or just this is discussion reopened?
I'm, yeah, I made a motion.
Did you second?
And it's been seconded, and Mr. Ellis, there was some, there's discussion at this point in time. And I'm, I'm just expressing my opinion that at this point in time, I don't know that I would be supportive of the project, and this is what I'm saying.
Okay. Any further discussion?
I would concur with Mr. Lewis, so, you know, evaluating on what the zoning code allows, we'd have to do that with consideration for the neighbors upon their, their testimony.
Well, I, I think we need to evaluate it in consideration with the approved final development plan.
Okay, great.
Ms. McBride.
Does it? Yes.
Does your second stand?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Ellis voted no.
No, to me. Then I'm going to vote no.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes, for the continuance.
Mr. Gothard?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes, thank you.
So that means it is continued until either the next meeting or when you submit your revised application materials.
Thank you, commissioners. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. No, it's been. Yeah. Yeah, to reiterate what my colleague is saying, for those who were in attendance tonight to discuss that case, we apologize, but we also thank you for coming and showing your support or opposition tonight. The next item on the agenda tonight is a quasi-judicial hearing for a planned unit development, case one, two thousand twenty-three PUD, for sixty-six ninety-four and sixty-seven hundred Clough Pike.
Can, can we pause for a second to let the people ask it?
Yes, we sure can. I'll do that.
Mr. Chair, could we just have some commission discussion maybe? I would, I would like for staff to seriously consider what is going on our agenda because I think we've had some cases last month. We have, in my opinion, two cases this month that do not provide the details, and I think it's quite frankly a waste of our time and their time.
I, I can discourage the applicants from moving forward, but we cannot prohibit them from moving forward. Once they've made an application, we work with the applicants over and over and over again, but we can't not allow it on the agenda. If they make their application on time, we can't prohibit them from being on the agenda. So, I mean, if they make their deadlines, it's their option to move forward. I agree, and we try to. I agree. And we try to clarify in the staff report some items that may be missing, but we can't not put them on the agenda if they meet all the deadlines.
But I guess the point I would make is if it's on our checklist that you need a lighting plan or the dumpster detail or whatever, and they don't provide it, that application isn't complete.
Okay.
And so it doesn't, doesn't come on. That's just my opinion.
And that's, I think that's why I was trying to say earlier, maybe not as well, but yes, it was, it was an incomplete.
Yep, some places I know do have the staff review the application for completeness. And I know you're limited by whatever policy direction that you guys have. But maybe that is something to consider if there has to be a policy modification that, you know, yeah, you review it for completeness. And if there's obviously, obvious misses, you know, some details in the site plan might be one thing, but, you know, just missing information. To the extent, I understand you can only do what you can do as well.
I'll start off this presentation with this is an incomplete application. We'll just get that out on the table right now. This is the second month for an incomplete application. So I'll just state that as well because it was pulled from the agenda last month and this is the second month. This is before you. All right, the applicant is Michael Dungus of Core Resources on behalf of Anderson Land Holdings LLC, the property owner. The location is two separate parcels, sixty-six ninety-four and sixty-seven hundred Clough Pike. The request is a planned unit development approval for parking lot modification, dumpster enclosure, patios, and existing tent, temporary tent to remain with an impervious surface that should be ratio of eighty-seven point two percent. This is for sixty-six ninety-four Clough Pike and eighty-six point two for sixty-seven hundred Clough Pike. Also, a change of use is proposed at sixty-seven hundred Clough Pike for a bourbon bar. So the one is Anderson Township Pub. And then the other building is proposed to be a bourbon bar. We put the history on here just to.
Yes. Oh, yes, you're right. Well, do you want me to give the presentation and then swear in while I'm on a roll?
Yes.
Okay.
So there is some history here on these properties. So the building, the A T P building was constructed in nineteen fifty-seven. And then the adjacent building was built in nineteen sixty-eight. So with that being said, both parking lots are not conforming to our current regulations. This is an effort to retrofit these two buildings and their parking. The buildings are compliant, the parking areas are not. So just keep that in mind when we're going through the parking reviews, that they are attempting to bring the parking lots as close to compliance, however, just working with the existing site conditions. So the A T P was established in nineteen eighty-two, according to their sign. And then the current owners purchased the property on March the tenth, twenty twenty, and then sixty-seven hundred Clough on June fifteenth, twenty twenty. The former use of the sixty-seven hundred Clough Pike was S D H Controls, which was primarily an office building, but they off, they also had some inventory there on site. So this is our communication with the owners. We received a complaint back in August of twenty twenty. This was received to us by Hamilton County Planning and Development regarding pavement of their back lot without the issuance of a zoning certificate. So in August twenty twenty, we did notify them that zoning was required. We met with them in September twenty twenty. A plan was submitted, but more information was needed to make a determination of what process to go through. In June of twenty twenty, staff met on site with the owner to discuss future plans and request an application for zoning to bring the property into compliance. March twenty, twenty-three, Hamilton County Planning Development, I'm sorry, I've met, I've gotten out of order here. So there was a fire. There was, this got out of order. So there was a small fire in March of twenty twenty-three. So the Anderson Township Fire and Rescue brought our attention to the temporary tent that was back in the back that was erected without building or zoning approval. So that building was posted as unsafe structure. Then we issued a zoning certificate on April the fifth, predicated that an application be made to the zoning commission. This was an application for the tent, predicated that application was made to the zoning commission to review this as a P U D and then also take action on the tent as part of the P U D. So in May, a P U D application was submitted. However, the application was incomplete. So then on May twenty-third, that is the date that was listed on the zoning certificate for the two temporary tents to be removed. However, the application for zoning commission was continued, so the tents are still there. And then on June ninth, a revised P U D application was submitted. I just thought it was important for you to understand the history of what got us to where we are today. So this is the site in question. This is the A T P, sixty-six ninety-four Clough. This is sixty-seven hundred. This is the proposed bourbon bar. This is the Family Pet Center. And then this is the drive-through beverage. So this is an aerial taken from cages. It shows the pay parking in the back. This is one of the temporary tents. Family Pet Center, there is some shared parking between the two uses. And then this is the drive-through here. Again, this whole area through here is zoned E retail. The properties to the east are zoned single family as well as across the creek there, Clough Creek. You can see the two zoning districts there. These are some of the site photos that we took while we were there with our drone. This is showing the access out to Clough Pike. This is the outdoor patio of A T P. This is one of the temporary tents. This is the other building adjacent, the old S D H Controls building. This is an area that's proposed for an outdoor patio area and proposed parking modifications. These are some of the already parking lot modifications in view of the other tent. This is looking from Clough Pike, the main entrance into the back area for the parking. This is the existing sign that was shared already between both properties. The blacked out area was the one that S D H Controls was using for their business. And then this is the Township Pub sign. It is a non-conforming freestanding sign because of the size. This is one of the tents, again, the outdoor patio area. This is a wall sign that was painted, a mural. It's very nicely done, but no zoning certificate was, it's not a mural. It's considered a wall sign because it does advertise for the business. So it would need a permit for a free, for a wall sign. This is the front of the S D H Controls building that would be modified for the bourbon bar. This is the back area of that building. Aerial again, kind of showing. This is another sign that was installed. So let's go to the plans. Okay, so these are the plans that were submitted by the applicant. This is the S D H Controls building, which would become, is the proposed bourbon bar. They are proposing still two handicap spaces out front. And again, these are non-compliant with our current regulations because of the backup and the proximity to Clough Pike. But as I stated before, we're looking at a non-compliant parking area and trying to bring it into compliance as much as possible. This is the proposed loading space here. They are proposing a one-way drive aisle to get to the back of the parking area. Once you get back to the back of the buildings, all traffic would be two-way. This is also two-way traffic as well. The property line is kind of hard to see, but it's right here. So this was a shared access drive between the two properties, Family Pet Center and the pub. And these are shared parking spaces again between the Family Pet Center and the pub. Dumpster enclosure is proposed back here. There is a patio, a covered patio on this side of the building for the bourbon bar and then an uncovered patio over in this particular area here. And then they are proposing just to keep one of the temporary tents. It's not cooperating. Yep, it's just the one plant. So I'll go back. Hmm, it's the wrong one, sorry. Bear with me. Chair's going to add the other. Sorry, we had issues with our PowerPoint tonight. We don't have a plan on the PowerPoint. Yeah, so the other plans are in your packet. Evidently, they're not available for.
Can everyone else also get a copy of the plans? Everyone in the audience can see the plans up.
No, no, this is just for, so we can. I'm sorry, we have the site plan and the.
Elevation.
And the elevation, which is the second page of your, yes. We don't have the.
Third page.
Yes, there is three pages. It's here, it's just not coming up. Let me try to re-save it and see if it'll come on.
Bear with this. Thank you. Paul, if you don't mind, I could take this time to swear the audience.
That's a good idea.
Yeah. For those of you that are still here, I do apologize again. But with this being a quasi judicial hearing, I need to read this to you again and swear you in if you prepare, or if you're prepared to testify tonight. So. Not yet. A few moments of just listening to this. First, I'll outline the procedures to the commission, that the commission will follow in hearing and deciding this matter. Under the zoning resolution, our decision is subject to appeal to the Board of Township Trustees and then to the Court of Common Pleas. As a result, we must employ different procedures from the other cases that are typically presented to the commission. Because this is a quasi judicial proceeding, the commission will only receive evidence as to whether the application meets or does not meet the standards and criteria in the zoning resolution. We do not, will not hear opinions, only facts relating to compliance with these standards and criteria. And as a result, all persons presenting testimony before the commission, whether for or against the applicant's position, may only do so after being sworn in. All witnesses will be subject to cross-examination. The staff will present a summary of the application. The applicant will then present its case. The board members may ask questions of the staff and anyone who speaks on behalf of the applicant. And if attorney presents the case for the applicant, the attorney is not sworn in and is not considered to be a witness. As a result, the attorney's statements are not considered as evidence. Evidence only comes in through the witnesses who testify before the commission after being sworn in. The burden is on the applicant to present evidence that the application satisfies the standards and criteria for approval. After the applicant presents its case through its witnesses, all persons in the audience supporting the application will be permitted to testify one at a time after being recognized by the chair. When all persons supporting the application are finished, those opposed to the application will then be permitted to testify after being recognized by the chair. If anyone in opposition is represented by an attorney, that party will go first, followed by any members of the audience. As stated previously, all persons wishing to testify, whether for or against the application, may only do so after being sworn in. When testifying, each person from the audience must come forward to the podium after being recognized, speak into the microphone, and state their name, address, and any affiliation to the case. All persons testifying will be limited to four minutes unless a commission member requests that they be given additional time. All testimony is directed to the commission only, and no comments or questions are to be directed to the applicant or anyone else in the audience. The commission will only hear new, non-repetitive evidence or questions. Should someone wish to show support of previous testimony, they may do so by following the testimony procedures and stating their support of previous testimony. Now, will all persons who may give testimony this evening, please stand, raise your right hand, and swear or affirm. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God? All right, I do want to, there were three people who are sworn in at this point. Thank you.
Okay, so these are the proposed elevation drawings of the bourbon bar. This would be the front elevation that would face Clough Pike. This is the side elevation with the covered patio area. This is the elevation that would be from the rear, from the parking lot. And then this is the side that faces the quincture. The buildings are right up against each other, so it's just a solid wall. You don't, wouldn't actually see that too much. So back to the PowerPoint presentation. Thanks, sorry, I'm getting tired. So this particular property, since it is greater than sixty percent I S R, it does require P U D hearing by the board. We did look at zoning resolution compliance. These are the articles that are not fully in compliance with all requirements of the zoning resolution. The setback to an adjacent residence zoning district, which is the very back of the parking lot or to the west, they are proposing a zero-foot setback where ten-foot setback is required. And this is mainly to take advantage of that entire area for parking and to try to maximize the area for parking. The back is a steep hillside and the residents are up on top of the hill. So that's why they are proposing a zero-foot setback versus the ten-foot required setback. Article five point three, D one F, again, it requires screening. With the area being a hillside, they feel that the existing wooded area provides that screening from the adjacent residence area. Number five point three, D two D, two handicap spaces in front of Clough, sixty-seven hundred Clough do not meet the required thirty-foot setback for turnaround area. They are located at twenty feet. Five point three, D three A, this requires the parking spaces to be at nine by nineteen. This was something that we did discuss with the applicants. And the original proposal that came into us, the circulation pattern was very awkward and confusing. They were trying to do angled parking and a lot of one-way movement. So we did discuss with them and felt that a better option may be nine by eighteen versus nine by nineteen. So this was a suggestion by staff, but in order for this to happen, they would need a variance through this process. The loading areas, I'm sorry, the wheel stops or curbs are required around the perimeter of the parking area and around all landscaping areas, and neither are shown on the plan. Elevations were not shown for the dumpster and trash handling areas. Parking again is an issue with this particular one. They are a permissible range and when you include both of the uses together, the township allows for an optimum parking spaces. You're allowed to go ten percent over or ten percent under. So the optimum range for this is eighty-five to one hundred five total spaces. The applicant is proposing fifty-two onsite spaces and thirty offsite for a total of eighty-two spaces. So they are three shy of the optimum number. And also no shared parking agreement with the Family Pet Center was provided, as well as no cross-access easement was provided. So it was shown on the plan that these spaces are provided by Family Pet Center, but no shared parking agreement was provided. A lighting plan was not submitted. A landscaping plan was not submitted. It was, some landscaping was shown on their site plan, but the species weren't identified and it wasn't a complete landscaping plan. Signage, the applicant stated that they are proposing to use the current freestanding sign, which is non-conforming, and the zoning commission has had a history of once a P U D comes before them, requiring the freestanding signs become compliant. And then there also have been two new wall signs that have been added that have not been permitted. So overall findings with the township adopted plans. Staff does feel that this proposal, change of use for the bourbon bar, improving the park. Staff does feel that this proposal, um, change of use for the Bourbon Bar and improving the parking area behind the ATP, um, potentially cross-access in the back and shared parking for the whole Clough corridor. All of these are consistent with the Anderson Plan. We feel like the greater idea and the proposal is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Uh, consistent with economic vitality, consistent with land use and development, um, and several different initiatives. Um, the Anderson Trails Plan, the township had put in a sidewalk along Clough Pike many years ago with our Clough Pike business improvement. And we were hoping at that time that this would spearhead economic development in the area. That was one of the reasons why the township invested into that neighborhood. So, and this is something that was somewhat of an outcome of our Clough Pike Business Plan. So all of this is moving toward that. We just feel that it was an, it's an incomplete application to make a decision. So from design guidelines, again, site planning, uh, we felt that it was consistent with upgrading the visual character of both of these buildings. Um, relationships, they should be linked with adjacent properties in the corridor and surrounding area to provide safe, convenient access. Uh, one of the recommendations of our Clough Plan a long time ago was to encourage shared parking, cross-access, not necessarily dedicated cross-access, uh, roadways, but parking lot connections, so that a plan like this could take place. We think that's, makes a very strong business corridor. Um, the plan did show the potential of cross-access to the north, to the Family Pet Center, but did not identify it to the south, to the quinter, and while those two properties are not redeveloping at the, at the time, in the future, if they were to redevelop, we think those easements should be put in place. Um, circulation again, um, there are pedestrian connections shown from the sidewalk on Clough Pike up to both properties. Um, and then we did talk about circulation and, uh, shared parking. Lighting, again, no lighting plan was submitted. And signage, um, staff is of the opinion that the freestanding signage should be brought into compliance. Um, similar to other newer, um, new signage in the corridor. This is a neighborhood business district. It's not necessarily Beachmont Avenue, so we feel like, you know, the signage should be appropriate to those. That's a little discussion about the signs. Um, and the, the two new wall signs are very pretty. They look very nice. Um, they just need to be permitted. So, uh, recommendations, these were the areas that we felt like the plans were lacking and that more additional information. So revised site plan, um, one item, the patio in the site plan does not match the floor plan. Retaining walls, are they required or needed for the back of the parking lot if you're going for a zero-foot setback? Cause the topography does start to, uh, change drastically, so if, you know, are retaining walls necessary? Are they needed? Is a retaining wall needed for the dumpster? There's currently, um, a low wall, but would one be needed if the dumpster is being relocated further back? Um, cross-access and shared parking agreements, staff feels that that should be in place, um, because the only way they can meet minimum parking requirements is to have shared parking. Lighting plan, staff is of the opinion that is necessary and required. Um, you're not required to provide lighting, but a restaurant and a bar should have lighting in their parking lot. Landscaping plan, one was not provided. Elevation drawings of the dumpster enclosure. A timeline for the Bourbon Bar removal of the tent. It did state in the application, the tent would be removed once the Bourbon Bar opened, but we don't know when that is, and the temporary tent's been up for about three years. Um, and then adjust, address the general standards for a PUD plan approval, including, um, acoustical privacy. Because in the past, we have received complaints from some of the adjacent residents about, um, noise from these, uh, businesses. And it is a neighborhood business district, so we want to make sure that they're compatible with the surrounding neighborhoods. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Paul. Appreciate it. Um, at this point, we can open up, uh, questions to staff. And Mr. Elif, do you have any questions for staff?
Yes, just a couple. Um, s- in the back, uh, one of the variations they wanted was the parking lot to be able to come, not meet the ten-foot setback, but then also I saw the comment that there's no, um, parking chocks or anything. Now, I know it slopes up there. Did you feel like they needed those? I, I saw it was mentioned, but I didn't see that in your recommendation that they should put, but if it's approved, they should put barriers along the back there. I did see about the retaining wall. Is that what you're thinking would cover it?
Uh, yeah, well, first, it is unclear if a retaining wall is needed. Um, and I was looking to see if we had a good.
Kinda showed it.
Shot, which I don't think we do, but, you know, currently the.
Kinda shows it, but yeah.
It kinda shows it, but, you know, not much farther back is when the, it starts to go up the hillside. And it's a little unclear on the plans that were submitted. If they're getting, if you look at the site plan, you do see the topo lines underneath the parking lot, but it's unclear if, if a wall is going to be needed. Um, it looks to me like a wall would be needed in order to get those spaces back there.
Okay.
So, eh, so your first question was a curb or parking blocks is?
Yeah.
They're required around the perimeter of a parking area, one, one or the other, parking blocks or curb.
Just seems like if you don't have any setback, you'd want something there.
Yes, correct.
That's why I was asking the question.
Right.
And then the, the tent, that's from the ATP. They've put that tent up there. And when you say removal of the tent, you're saying when this, you're recommending when this is, if this is approved, that all the tents are gone, correct? Or do they get?
The tents are temporary material, and we feel that at some point, it probably should be removed.
Right.
And if, if, if they need that space or desire that space, then it should be more permanent, durable.
So there's two tents there now, so it says removal of the tent, that would be removal of.
The one that's to remain, correct.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Mr. McBride.
So in the pictures though, there's like more than one tent, but.
Correct.
But since then, they've taken two down? Or, I'm tense confused.
I think the applicant should answer that. Sometimes they go up, sometimes they go down. We've seen them differ.
So, I think that in addition to supplying all of the information that's required, et cetera, that, for example, their parking summary, it needs to include both parcels. Because I have no idea personally if ATP is overparked or underparked or what. Um, so I think, oh, I'm sorry, here it is. Never mind, sorry. I take that back. Um, I didn't see, well, okay, long evening. Um, so, um, at any rate, um, well, I'll, I'll just, I'll stop there and wait for the applicant, I'm sorry.
Sure. Mr. Lewis.
So Paul, on the, back to the tents, um, there should have been a zoning, um, approval to put the tents in to begin with. And what is our definition of temporary versus permanent tent structures?
We don't have a definition.
Do we have safety requirements?
The, um, that's through the building department. They inspect those tents when they're up to a certain size.
And has this been inspected or do you know?
It has now. It hadn't for the first, first several years, but it has now in, um, when it was brought to our attention in March, and then they did apply for their building permit, and it has been approved by the building department.
Okay. Do we, do we assign a, a time, uh, for definition of a temporary tent?
We do not.
Okay. Alright, my other questions will be for the applicant. Thank you. Mr. Gauthier?
No questions, Stan, thank you.
Paul, one real quick question. I, I can't figure it out, just, um, is the new proposed parking, is it paved parking or are they proposing to? Do you know this or should I ask it of them?
Is it paved? Yes.
Okay.
But it was gravel within it.
It was gravel initially, yes. And then that's when it was brought to our attention, when they paved it.
Gotcha, okay. But the plan is for a paved parking lot?
Correct.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you. Uh, that's the only question I have right now. Any other questions for staff? Seeing none, um, if the applicant is here, um, please come up, state your name, address, and affiliation.
Uh, good evening. Um, Mike Dundas, Core Resources, seven, seven, nine, five, Five Mile Road. Um, I am here on behalf of the applicant and the property owner, Anderson Land Holdings. Um, first off, thank you, staff, for, um, working with us over the last couple of months to one, get the, try to get the ATP site, um, into compliance with, uh, some of the issues that they have had in the past, but also trying to help us understand how we can make the best use of, um, the flow controls or what we're calling the Bourbon Bar site. The applicant, the property owners have made, uh, substantial investments over the year. Um, one in ATP, uh, after they bought it in twenty twenty, um, to kind of try to revive a, a, a local bar establishment. Um, and I think they've done a great job with that, and that, that bar is now thriving. Um, and they would like to, um, uh, repeat that with the building next door that they acquired back in twenty twenty as well. Um, that building is a little bit of an eyesore right now. Um, it's dilapidated, it's been vacant for a while, um, and they are wanting to, uh, suspend, or spend, uh, substantial investment, uh, to make it better. Um, they see the demand, um, in the community and in the neighborhood uh, for another establishment like this. It'll be different than anything in Anderson Township. Um, I like to think it's gonna be the, the coolest bar east of OTR, um, which I think will be great for, for the community and specifically for that, that corridor. Um, and as was stated by the staff, I think this fits well within, um, the township's plan for that corridor. Um, there are, I, I know, I've, I've read the staff report. Um, when we got the initial feedback, uh, from the staff after our initial application, um, I would be the first submit, it was not, um, fully complete as it should be. Um, we applied, um, our architects put something together, and we applied based off of a pre-application meeting, um, and I, as well as anybody should have known, that more needed to go into that, so that's my fault. Um, when we got the staff's response, um, after last month, uh, we provided a line-by-line, um, explanation for each of their items. Um, and thought that that, that we had provided, um, good response to everything. If it was insufficient, we'll work on it. The applicant definitely wants to make this work and uh, work with the township and the community to, um, make this, make this happen, because, um, I think, I think it'll be great, and they're, they're motivated, uh, to be a good neighbor, to be a good partner, um, and to add something great to the community. Um, to start to address some of the comments, um, I will start with, um, the items that are on the recommendation list by the staff. Uh, patio on the site does not match the floor plan. We were trying to, so the architectural drawing, um, does not show the patio extending, the, the, the north patio extending beyond the, uh, northeast corner of the building. Uh, that was because we were, at one point, we were trying to see if we could shift that drive line over and add more parking. Parking is obviously a, a major issue, uh, with this site, um, both currently and as proposed. So we've been trying to squeeze as, as many parking spaces in as we can. We've gone through several iterations of this, as, uh, Paul had indicated. Um, we had some angled parking at the beginning. Um, I will agree that it caused the drive patterns to be a little wonky, but we were trying to, we thought we could get more, um, spots in that way. Um, we, after we met with staff, we revised it to what you see here. Um, so, that is the reason that the architectural plan does not match what's shown on the site plan. Um, our intent is to have the patio extend as the site plan shows, um, so that when you walk into that, um, east entrance, uh, you're flanked on each side uh, by a patio area. Uh, retaining walls on the east side, uh, we did update, um, did an ALTA survey on the existing site. Um, and this, I know our, our civil engineer does not feel that, um, a retaining wall is needed for that parking. At most, maybe a small barrier curb, um, that we could help level the grade off a little bit for the parking. Uh, for the dumpster, uh, same thing, um, there is a small wall there existing, and, um, we feel that the, the new location of the, how the dumpster is oriented, uh, will not require a, uh, a, a new retaining wall. If, if after further analysis from our, um, civil engineer one is required, then, um, we would, uh, resubmit for that specifically. But as of now, our engineer does not think it's necessary. Um, provide cross-access, shared parking agreements. Um, we are open to that, and we'll do that across the back to allow, so if the, um, neighbors on either side, um, have future development, um, that cross-access can be made, um, across the back of the site. Uh, the applicant has no issue with that. Uh, the lighting plan, uh, we clearly misunderstood the staff. Uh, we are not planning on any additional site lighting and, and what already exists. Um, at one time, we had discussed it, but, um, the, the property owner feels that, the, and the bar operator feel that, that um, the existing lighting and the ambient lighting that exists, um, is sufficient for their clientele. Um, it's not been an issue in the past, and we don't plan on adding any new. So that's why we did not submit a lighting plan. Uh, landscaping plan, um, we added the landscaping shown. Uh, I realized that the plants are not identified. Um, again, I think that was maybe a misunderstanding from our architects when we had asked if a, um, landscaping plan was required by a landscape architect or if our engineer could do it. This is what he thought, um, was needed. So we can certainly address that um, and list the plants, um, as needed and, and or to the staff's liking. Uh, the landscaping is a little challenging on the site, just kind of like with the parking, we have limited space and limited availability. Um, so we have tried to put in as much as we can without, um, taking away too much parking um, and still providing, uh, good visual aesthetics. You know, the majority of, the, the nature of the configuration of this site is that much of the parking in the, um, impervious surfaces are in the rear, and you don't really see it from the front. Um, it's a heavily wooded area in the back, but, um, we would agree that, you know, where we can, we will add landscaping to make it visually appealing. Um, elevation drawing for the dumpster enclosure, um, that, the dumpster enclosure will be, uh, either similar or better materials than the building um, facade, which is, uh, currently CMU, so, um, we can, we can certainly provide that. But that, that'll be the design, is it'll, it'll, it'll match the building. Uh, timeline for the Bourbon Bar, intent removal, uh, for the Bourbon Bar, um, if, if we were approved tonight, um, we would, um, we've already started full design. Um, the, the applicant is, um, very interested in making this happen. Um, so we have, we have started full design. This was our preliminary design, uh, so full design is going into much more detail, both our civil engineer, interior designer, architects, and, uh, MEP engineers are working on the design for the Bourbon Bar. Uh, we would hope to be, uh, in for permit by August, September time, timeframe, begin construction in October, uh, complete construction by conservatively March timeframe. Um, and as far as the tent removal goes, uh, staff did a good job, uh, recapping the, uh, the history, the three-year history of those temporary tents. And, uh, the desire is to, once the Bourbon Bar is open, uh, that the one tent would be removed. Um, and then the other that kind of sits along the property line between, uh, the two properties, uh, we're discussing would remain. They get a ton of business from those tents. They are sold out, um, reserved multiple days a week, um, throughout the entire year. Uh, so they feel that their clientele and the community get a lot of value out of them, um, which is part of the reason, um, at the Bourbon Bar, they're putting such a large, um, canopy over that outdoor areas, because at ATP, they get so much used out of them, um, and a lot of business generated through them. Um, the Bourbon Bar will have a little bit different feel than ATP. ATP, ATP is kind of a local place. You can take your kids, um, go after a game. Uh, the Bourbon Bar's gonna be a little bit more elevated, uh, so they still want to maintain that outdoor, um, reservable space at ATP, which is why they'd like to keep the one tent there. Um, some of the other, uh, general standards of a PUD, uh, shared parking. So this is a big challenge. This drawing shows the parking, uh, with the pet center. That is not necessarily where we will have shared parking. We're still working on that. Uh, and the applicant is in discussion with several of the other property owners, including the Legion, and our first application, uh, we had provided a layout of, uh, some of the parking that is on the other side of the pet center, which is owned by the Legion. He has been in discussions with them. There is no signed agreement yet, um, but that's where we had initially planned on the additional parking. Uh, right now, I believe he's just got kind of a gentleman's agreement with the pet center to use those spots that you see along the north side there, uh, but there's nothing in writing. Um, also in discussion with some of the property owners to the south. Clearly, that needs to be addressed. Um, it is in process. He feels very confident that he's going to get it. Uh, but he also feels that, uh, with the, um, current parking that is onsite for ATP and with the additional clientele that will be um, at Clough Bar, that it is sufficient. Um, there's no street parking, um, and he's willing to take the risk that, um, if he doesn't have any parking, people may or may not come, or they'll use, um, um, ride-sharing services to get there. It's not like there's a large public space or, um, a lot of street parking that his clientele would be taking up. Um, so they feel pretty comfortable moving forward, um, knowing that they still need to get. So they feel pretty comfortable moving forward, knowing that they still need to get some type of agreement in place with some of the neighboring property owners, but he thinks he can still make it work. Sinage, we were not initially planning on changing any of the signage. If the monument site out front is not in compliance, then we will go through the signage process and take it down and put a new one up. The signs that are painted on the side of the ATP building, I talked with them earlier this week, excuse me, or last week, and we will apply for those and go through the appropriate processes to get those approved since they were not. Back to the tents. So when the fire occurred, which is kind of when we got brought in, so Core Resources, we were hired by them as the general contractor to help with the design of the bourbon bar. That was it. That's all that we had initially were engaged for when the fire occurred. And we found out there was this whole issue with the existing parking and some of the other non-compliance issues. They asked us to get involved and help them through the process. So we applied for the zoning certificate for the tents. They, when the zoning certificate was given, they took it to the county the next day to get a permit from the county, which was approved and is in place right now. The county permit allows for 180 days for it to be up before you have to resubmit. I'm going to grab my water real quick. I think I've addressed most of the comments, but if I've missed anything or further questions, I am here to discuss.
Thank you. Mr. Jell, if we could start with you?
I just had one question for Mr. Dungus, which is the tent that would remain. What's the capacity of that?
I don't know.
Because it sounds like it's full every weekend.
And there's an outdoor kind of patio area as well that's part of that.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
So, starting with the the tent that you would like to have remain, the temporary tent that's going to remain forever, I guess. So you you said, quote, "It does a ton of business on the weekends." And yet, it's not included in your parking calculations. So where do those ton of people, or where are they supposed to park?
On that?
On your, on your site plans, you've got parking that's required, it's for the building and then for the patios, because there are two patios for ATP, right?
The the tent that remains is part of the patio.
That's part of that 1,261 square feet?
Yeah. That patio, there's a room here.
Okay. Okay. And then, I guess, I guess that's more of a question than for Paul. The shared parking, where you're talking about now it being on the Legion property, but an awful lot of times, I think they have conflicting hours. They have evening events, when you would be having evening events.
There is, it's, the Legion owns the property, it's the hardwood centers parking behind it, and the spaces that are used by that business during the day is what they had been in discussions with using.
And how would the people get from there to here?
The wonderful sidewalk that township put in.
Okay. And what what lighting exists right now on the property that you feel is sufficient?
On this, these two properties?
Mm-hmm.
Very little, but if you walk out there at night, it's not too dark to navigate.
How about too dark to feel safe? The, you're going to cover, permanently cover the patio for the bourbon bar, right?
Mm-hmm.
And and so I'm assuming it's going to have some kind of wall or something around it?
Yeah.
And then, does the patio, because I did not get back there, does the patio behind ATP, does that have a fence around it? Because isn't that required by the liquor board if you're going to serve liquor?
I think there is partly, but I don't know that it goes, I don't know if there's a picture of it or not.
Yeah, I think, I think that it's required by the liquor board that there'll be a like four-foot fence around that with a safety gate to get out in case there's a fire, but to prohibit people from leaving with alcoholic beverages.
Mm-hmm.
So that's kind of a, an issue. And, well, I'll just, I'll stop there.
The the parking as it's proposed right now is not even up to the minimum, correct?
Correct.
So I think at a minimum, we would need some shared parking agreement with, if it doesn't matter who, but with like the pet family center, you probably would have staggered hours of what they would have and you would have. So it would be encouraged to, to investigate that and get something in place. You know, there's a, there's just, I mean, there's a ton of holes here, as you, as you admit. And I know I have, in the past, expressed concern and a bit of disdain for coming in and asking for forgiveness, instead of asking for, you know, getting the, everything in place ahead of things, of time, like the wall signs, like the the repaving, and, you know, I could go on, but, you know, I I like the idea, I like the concept. I agree it's, it could be a very good place if done properly and to code, so.
Thank you. Mr. Gautier?
I mean, this commission member would have a hard time making any motion or supporting any motion on what has verbally been transpired, you know, and said, "We will, we may, we are working on, we might." You know, there's a lot of unknowns here. So, you know, it's hard for, in my opinion, this commissioner to vote in favor of anything without concrete information on what is actually being proposed, how the items in the staff report, how the items that have been brought up through the zoning through the last three years, how those are going to be addressed, you know. So, you know, again, I agree with some of the other commissioners who stated the concept seems really good, you know, as far as the bourbon bar and the reuse of that building and bringing life into the Clough Business District. I just don't know if this commissioner has enough information that is not what-ifs to actually make a positive rendering for the applicant.
Just one quick question on the bourbon bar entrance that's indicated here. Is that intended to be an ingress-and-egress driveway? Or is the plan to use the the shared access north of ATP?
Going into the bourbon bar is one way and you would circulate out north of ATP? Is that the question?
That is the question, and that kind of gets to the second question. Is, is there a shared access agreement in place yet with the other half of that drive that's part of the pet store?
Uh, no.
Not yet? Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? Seeing none, if there are any audience members who would like to come up and address the commission, please state your name, address, and affiliation, if any.
Hello, I'm Guy Wolf, 6001 Stirrup Road, and I live about a mile from the site. I'm also a member of the American Legion, but I'm not speaking on behalf of that organization. In general, I'm supportive of this. I think it's a, represents a positive move for that location. There's a couple of areas where I'd like to see real specificity on, and that's item 10, the adequacy of the provisions for visual and acoustical privacy. My interpretation of that is, you know, not lights blaring out. For instance, there's a apartment building on Beauchamp that has these Klieg lights that blast out, clearly overextending what the need is for lighting on the parking, on the parking lot. It's really light trespass on other people's property. A few years ago, this zoning board was very diligent in enforcing light discipline, if that's the right word, on the Harmony Senior Center. And if you go by, those are all hooded and enclosed. So I I would encourage that to be a specific part of this. And then the other is sound. I'm, I'm a little disappointed that our Big Ash Brewery guys left before this because one of the real problems with having such close businesses to to housing is that those bands get in there and they really crank that volume up. We hear Big Ash from Turpin Hills, it comes right up the alley. And and so I'm in favor of acoustical privacy, if that means bands aren't too loud and too late and too frequent, but I would like to see some specificity on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other audience members who are speaking? To be clear, were you in favor of or opposition to? Okay, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Robert Franco, and I live at 2432 Royal View Court. So that's just up in the woods, east of the property. And even though that is a heavily wooded area, I can tell you that the sound does travel up when there are bands are playing at ATP, and that occurs once or twice a week now, for several hours at a time. When the bands are playing, the sound comes up the hill, and I can tell you, my neighbors can tell you, that the sound comes into the houses. You can have your doors and your windows closed, and all through the house, you can hear the sound from the bands that are playing at ATP. Now, to me, being able to sit in your house and not be invaded by sound from commercial properties coming into your house is a pretty good definition of acoustical privacy. So what I'm going to stress here is the township's own zoning resolution, which has certain requirements that need to be passed in order for approval to be given. And we already saw the list, but number 10 on that list addresses acoustical privacy. So this was, and I, you know, we have complained about this for some time to the sheriff's department. We have met with the owners, the current owners of the pub. We have met with the administration of the township. There, because of this specific problem at this location, I think it's fair to say that there was an attempt made to pass a noise resolution in the township, which it does not have at the current time that covers this. But for various reasons that I don't completely understand, that was not possible. But the township did raise this issue in their comments back to the applicant, and I commend you for that. The answer of the applicant, the response, we felt was rather vague, and let me just quote it, "The owner will work with the township to develop a policy related to sound and hours of operation." Well, basically, they're saying that sometime in the future, after you approve it, we'll sit down with you and maybe we can come up with something. Well, to me, that's not only vague, vague, but it's backwards. The plan should come first, and we think the plan should come with the aid of professional acoustical help. A sound engineer should do a plan for that site and recommend what has to be done in order to solve this problem, which I think most people do recognize is a real problem. But that's not what's being proposed. So we would like to see it done in the other order. We'd like to see a plan with the help of experts, then brought to you to approve. And I think that the township's own zoning document requires that, that they address this before it can be approved, not after it's approved. So the main problem here with sound are the bands, but yet, when I look at that site plan up there, I don't see anything on it. I looked at all those little diamonds with numbers in them with arrows pointing to things. None of them pointed to a place that said "Bandstand." I don't really know where the band's going to go. I don't know which way it's going to be oriented, you know. These are amplified speakers that they're using and sometimes drum sets. And it makes a big difference where it is, which way it's pointed. There's nothing there that says what provisions are going to be made to buffer or to separate the source of sound from the band from the residential properties that are up the hill. Seems like that is what should be an important part of the plan. This has been a problem for a while. This is probably, this zoning decision is probably the only chance that we're going to have to solve this problem in this specific site. So I would urge you to do that. Maybe they planned to move the band inside now that they have more room. That would be a good solution, but I didn't see any of that in the material that we, in fact, the band was not mentioned at all in the material that I saw. So I just wanted to also say that we're not against improving this property. We think that the property, both from a visual standpoint and from an acoustic standpoint, needs improvement, but it has to be done right. It has to be done in the right order, and it has to be done with expert help. Thank you.
Thank you. And to be clear, you are in opposition of the application as presented?
At this point, we're in opposition.
Thank you. Just going back real quick, were there any other audience members that wanted to speak in favor of the application?
Actually, I had a question for Mr. Franco, if that's appropriate.
I think you can do that.
My question for you, Mr. Franco, is do you hear noise from the outdoor tent activity?
Mr. Franco?
You know...
I hear somebody say yes back there, but I'm asking you.
Sometimes we, sometimes we, we do.
Sometimes, yes.
But I wouldn't call it a major problem in the absence of music. Now, they used to have a cornhole game back there, and that was a major problem, the thumping from the cornhole game.
Oh.
And every once in a while, you know, there'll be a game on and people will cheer. Yeah, fine, we're not against that. It's, but it's a whole different ballgame when you bring a band back there with amplified music.
Are the bands outside that you hear?
I believe so. I, I mean, I, I'm not the person to ask about, you know, where on that site plan the band is located or which way.
I wasn't asking you that. I was asking if your observation was, was the bands outside or not when they disturb you?
Well, yes, it's outside, you know.
They're set up outside?
From our property, which is up the hill, I can't tell exactly where the band is.
Okay, okay. That's what my question was.
You know, I'm pretty sure it must be outside, because I'll tell you, we have the veterans that are right down the hill also, and when they needed a zoning change a few years ago, we were concerned about that. And they won that zoning change, but they promised only to have indoor music as part of that deal and not to have any outside speakers. And they have kept to their promise, and it has not been a problem. And they have real bands there. I mean, they have big bands that are, you know, a lot noisier, but if it's inside, it's not a problem.
Thank you. Thank you. I don't think we had any other audience members that were sworn in, but if anyone does want to be sworn in and speak, we could allow that.
Can I just, I'll swear?
Well, briefly, yes. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you. Please state your name, address, and affiliation.
Diane Seaman, 2436 Royal, Royal View Court. Lived there for 20 years. We love the idea of individual businesses being successful. I'm a small business owner. It's just that the bands are the major concern. You know, we have a very beautiful house in this quiet setting, but not on Saturday nights when they have the bands. And I'm not opposed to music, I love music, but the, and the new owners have been better. When it went until 1:00 in the morning, that was terrible. Now, they do shut off, they're supposed to shut off at 10:00. Doesn't always happen at 10:00, but it sometimes continues later. They have private parties, it gets really loud, they can go until 1:00 and be annoyed. They have private parties, it gets really loud, they can go until 1:00 and be noisy. My concern is with the new bourbon bar, are they going to have more bands, more outside activity, more noise? You know, we're not opposed to noise, but it, it just, we have complained, and there's been no kind of, like, okay, we'll turn it down. I think my number is actually blocked by them now. So, it's a concern, and I would like to see a retaining wall for the parking, because I think that might bounce some of the noise back towards Clough Pike, as opposed to it going up the hill directly into our houses. We have brand-new windows, double-pane windows. Still, like Bob said, the noise comes inside, and it just is that bass. We used to live in the city. We moved away because I didn't like the bass of that music coming from people's cars, and here we are, getting the bass when they play, so, thank you.
Thank you. Any other audience members who wish to be sworn in? Seeing none, we can close the public portion of the testimony and open it up to commission discussion.
I would just ask staff, can you give us an overview of the noise restrictions, requirements within the township, if they exist at all, or?
So, our noise resolution pertains to construction noise only, and it's from the hours of 7:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., but it's only for construction. There are no restrictions for outside of that.
So, to get something on the books in zoning that would go from the trustees?
Yes, I mean, there's been...
Come from the trustees?
Well, so, there are some provisions in the zoning resolutions for PUDs, obviously, and for some, certain conditional uses, specifically in our industrial zoning district, there are some references to noise. We've looked at it township-wide. Noise is very difficult to enforce, because there's a different tolerance level for most, and there are different instances, you know. So, we have looked in, and looked at other communities as well to see what they've done. But right now, the research, there's not an appetite to do a township noise resolution outside of what's already been done for construction noise.
Okay.
Paul, we did, though, for Riverbend, make them shut down at 10:00. Isn't it 10:00, or maybe it's a...
It's an agreement, but it's not a requirement.
It wasn't part of their zoning.
I'm looking at Riverbend, it's not 10:00.
It's 11:00.
It's 11:00, sorry.
But it's, it's not a requirement, it's an agreement.
But as a part of a PUD, then that could be one of the conditions.
Yes, it could, yes.
Let me ask you this, Paul. Is it, is it, in your opinion, as the leader of the department, and Sarah, you can chime in too if you want, is it a practical, enforceable condition for zoning people to be responsible for when the band shuts off, what the noise level is? Isn't the fact of the matter, when all these problems happen, it's the police that are going to be dealing with it? I mean, are, I remember about that VFW and the indoor thing. Is that practical? I mean, I don't think we want to approve something based on some conditions that we all feel good about, but they're not practical. What's your opinion?
It's a challenge, yes. You're right. We would tell, if a resident complains, we would tell them to contact the sheriff's office, because they're the ones, be the ones that would go by at 1:00 a.m. in the morning or whenever. And they are also the one that we direct residents to for construction noise. If, if people are experiencing construction noise at 5:00 a.m., we have them call the non-emergency dispatch.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I mean, I think this commissioner, anyway, feels like I'm not prepared to vote on this tonight. If I do, I don't think they would be happy. I think it's a great idea. I like what the look of the building is going to be. I think, I think it could be really fun, even though I don't drink bourbon, I think it could still be fun. But I just have way too many questions about parking. I want to go back there at night and check out the well-lit parking lot that isn't well-lit. I just, I have too many concerns to vote positively tonight, so, that's my opinion.
And as I previously stated, I would agree with Ms. McBride on my aspects for the case.
Mr. Lewis, any discussion?
I agree.
Yeah.
I don't know what to vote you over, to be honest.
Right. Yeah, especially to me with regard to the parking, but also, maybe discussion is open now to talk about, you know, a six-foot fence or something else along the backside of the parking, you know. We don't, we're asking for lenience with regard to landscaping, because there's a bunch of trees, but maybe we still need a fence because of the sound. So, like you said, there are a lot of things at play that are probably not in favor of approval tonight, so.
I guess some specifics I would like to maybe hear that you could talk, talk about with the applicant is the tent remain, the one tent that they would like to remain, is that a make-or-break deal for them? The, I do agree with Ms. McBride, it's like, especially if there's a place where people are drinking, there's plenty of lighting options that you can have, down-directed lighting that's not going to affect anybody. We heard some discussion of it tonight. I think that's something that needs to be given a look. I think these, either barriers or support of that back wall needs to be given a look. And the other thing I'd be interested to hear, if it's practical or not, is if there is live music, that it be confined indoors, because that, that patio looks terrific. I think the drawings are awesome, and everybody's acknowledging that, but it does lend itself to, you know, setting the people up outdoors with the loudspeakers, and I think that's where the disruption comes, and there's always that conflict. We hear it all the time. We hear it with Beauchamp Avenue, and everybody lives along there, you know, where the commercial meets the residential. I'm not sure we have a solution for that, but, you know, that'd be something if the applicant says, "Yeah, we're okay with confining that indoors." That might be helpful.
Thank you, Mr. Yelich. Any other discussion, real quick?
And seeing none, I'd entertain a motion if there's one.
I would make a motion that we continue Case Anderson 1-2023, PUD, Anderson Township Pub, 6694 and 6700, Clough Pike, and continue the public hearing in progress.
Ms. Donovan, would you like to call rule?
Mr. Ellis?
Yes.
Ms. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Gothard?
Yes.
Mr. Henson?
Yes. Thank you. Paul, do we have any other new business that's not on tonight's agenda?
We do not.
All right, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the meeting. So moved. So moved.